All right. Here we go. Calling this public hearing to order at seven eighteen P M on Wednesday, July twenty third, two thousand and twenty five. Again, this meeting is being recorded for transition purposes only, and the written minutes and attachments of any will serve as the official record of this meeting. Again, any personal conversation should be saved until after the meeting so that those attending virtually will be able to hear. Any board member who has a monetary interest or has a conflict including S R T communication should disclose now. And again, we will call the robe.
Calabro?
Here.
Who has an excused absence? Rollins?
Here.
Zalesnik?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Rubel?
Here.
And the audience's alternate Stanaway, trustee Engelmann, zoning inspector Peter Lynn, and trustee Sweattick is virtual.
Okay, yes, thank you. All right. If you could read the legal notice.
Subject of the second public hearing is as follows. An application for a variance eight P zero two eight six was submitted by Thomas Pritchala, property owner of twenty four forty Ridge Road, Hinkley, Ohio, permanent parcel number zero one six zero three C three zero 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 seven, requesting to construct an accessory building in a location that does not meet the minimum side yard setback requirement of thirty feet at said property. Inspection of this property will take place Saturday, July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five, at approximately ten thirty A M. Zoning reference, chapter six, district regulations, subsection six R one dot four dot E, area yard and height regulations, and subsection six R one dot six dot A dot one, substrate buildings, let structure regulations of the Hinkley Township zoning regulations.
Okay, thank you. And has the notice been sent to the appropriate property owners?
Yes.
All right. The Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeal acts within the authority of section five nineteen of the Ohio Revised Code and exercises its powers as provided under chapter seven and thirteen of the Hinkley Township zoning regulations. All public hearings are open to the public. All persons wishing to testify must do so from the podium, must identify themselves and give their residence address, and must be sworn in. Evidence and testimony must be pertinent to this hearing, and it is at my discretion to limit any personal comments, personal attacks, opinions, or repetitious statements, or testimony or evidence previously given. Disrupted persons will lose their right to remain in this hearing, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. This is a hearing upon the applications of application of Thomas Pritchala, our property owner of the property located on twenty four forty Ridge Road, Hinkley, Ohio, for the variance for a variance from the enforcement of certain Hinkley Township zoning resolution sections to property owned by the applicant. Uh, the applicant has submitted a packet that everyone should have, which includes the original variance application, letters to the zoning board, any, and maps and sketches of the proposed uh accessory building. All are related to the variance that is being requested. Notice that the application was properly given in local newspapers, and the application has been available for public review and comment. Uh, I will now ask if we've received any, any calls or any emails, any communication regarding this.
No, there are none.
Okay. Uh, again, I note for the record that not written communications made by known or unknown persons not under oath at a pre-properly properly noticed hearing is not accepted by the Board of Appeals as testimony. Each member of the Board of Appeals has been provided a copy of the application and a copy of each of the other documents submitted in support of this application. And at this point, we'll call the Board if they receive the application and if they made a site visit.
Calabro?
Yes, and yes, a site visit on July nineteenth, Saturday.
Zalesnik?
Yes, Tuesday, the twenty second.
Rollins? Yes, Tuesday, July twenty second.
Schaefer?
Yes, Saturday, the nineteenth.
Rubel? Yes, and site visit July twenty third.
Okay, written communications from persons not present this evening may include communications that are not made by affidavit. Because of these communications are made by persons not under oath, they are not accepted by this Board. I also note that written communication may include some writing by affidavit by persons that are not present this evening and therefore cannot be subjected to FAS examination. These affidavits, therefore, will not be given much weight, if any, in the decision of the Board on this matter. This Board has the power to grant the applicant's request for a variance, and again, those people that wish to speak must do so from the podium, and all testimony must be given from the podium. I will now ask the applicant to step up.
And upon one of the requests, I have pictures of replicated building that I will be.
Okay, you can.
That I know, yeah.
Tommy Pritchala, address two four four zero Ridge Road, Hinkley.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, there's nothing but the truth that you show. Thank you. All right, if you want to give us a summary of what you submitted and.
All right, so I submitted a fifteen foot variance. I'm looking to put in a forty by sixty five foot pole barn. It's gonna have a thirteen foot overhang, so the actual footprint of it will be fifty, sorry, fifty three foot wide by sixty five foot in depth. The reason I'm submitting the variance is due to I have an existing pool in my backyard. It's a, basically, if I were to put the, if I were to comply with the restrictions required by Hinkley Township, my, the barn would actually be sitting on the pool deck, which would also cause issues for safety and for emergency access in case anything were to happen in the future with that. And then also, if I were to push the building back, I got a natural swale that the neighboring properties all drain into, that goes along the whole backs of my property. So the only way for me to really comply with the variance would be to hold, push the whole structure back into the right, which I can't do due to the natural swale. It's probably about six to ten foot swale that runs the whole backs of my property, and it's got a good foot, foot and a half of water in it eight months out of the year. So that pulling it forward is the only appropriate location that I could even put the structure. So that's basically the main reason why I'm applying for the variance, and also to block certain sight lines from neighboring properties as well.
Um, you stated fifteen feet, is it fifteen feet or twenty feet?
It's fifteen feet.
What's that now?
It's fifteen feet.
What, from the property line?
From the property line, so.
Basically, ten feet.
So when I survey, or when I applied for the zoning permit, I didn't have my property lane or my property stake, so I went closer just to be safe. And then once I actually laid everything out from the actual property line after the property was surveyed, it actually comes out that it will be fifteen and a half feet from the property line, not ten, like the initial paperwork stated.
So you're not looking for a twenty foot variance, you're looking for a fifteen foot?
Fifteen foot variance.
Did you notify the zoning inspector?
Yes.
Regarding that?
I called you.
I don't recall, because I would have updated the site plan.
And I believe I spoke with you in regards to it as well, and then Ms. Caballero as well.
Yes, I believe on Saturday.
Yeah.
I think when we were on the site visit, you did mention.
Yeah.
That it was a fifteen foot, but we still have, I just wanted to get it on the record that you submitted for a twenty foot variance, which it was only ten feet from the property.
Correct.
Okay.
But once I ever got, like, I finally got surveyed because they were six to eight weeks before.
Okay.
They were scheduling, I just wanted to be safe, so I filed for that ten foot from it. So technically, it'd be a twenty foot variance, but it's actually going to be a fifteen foot variance.
Okay. Um, I'll turn it over.
And then I also do have those pictures that you guys want to see. I know you requested me to bring them.
Okay, now I gotta figure this out.
I just have one question, and then I'll turn it over to the rest of the Board. What is the, what's the reason for, what is the purpose for the building?
The, so I have four children. I eventually would like to purchase an R V and a boat, and also just to store, because everything's kind of sitting outside right now, is to store basically stuff to maintain my property. That way, it's out of line of sight, and I give Hinkley Township a good image as well. Just you guys are.
Okay, so it's for personal, that's fine.
Personally, yeah.
So for, it's for personal use? Okay. And just so we're clear, this, these pictures you submitted that they'll go into, that's what the building's gonna look like?
Yes.
The accessory building will look like?
Correct. The only difference would be that that overhang's gonna be a little further forward, but it's gonna be.
Similar.
Very, very, it's gonna be the same footprint and everything, just gonna be slid over a little bit.
And I believe you stated when we were out there, this is not a picture that exists on your property right now.
No, this is.
An identical building that you found.
Correct, it's an identical building that I found in Granger, and it will be.
This is on my.
Exact replica of this, so I'm gonna be going through the same, I have the same prints and everything, so this will be the building.
Okay, anyone have anything?
You know, you were talking about the pool deck avenue be removed if you put it in the back. And I'm assuming that you're going by the fact that you're, it's gonna be in the same position where the sixty five feet is going east-west, and the forty or fifty-three feet is going north-south. If you move the building and you have a sixty-five foot north-south, and the fifty-three foot east-west, um, you're gaining, you know, um, what is it, twelve feet? Would that keep it off the pool deck?
I'm having a hard time following, so if I.
Right now, you have it going like this.
Yes.
Go like this and have the sixty-five feet like this, and then you're gaining, as far as you're saying that it's gonna be on the pool deck, it would then, you'd gain twenty, or pardon me, was it twelve feet?
The front left would still be very close to the swale. If I were to, I would have to measure it out to be exact, but that front left would still be super close to that swale because during like rainstorms and winter, when the snow melts, it comes a good ten, fifteen feet into my yard, depth-wise, that's why on the structure, if you at the site, I was.
That's a lot bigger than what I saw on.
No, no.
No, I mean, as far as the, the water.
Yeah, 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 right now, it's like the summertime, like this is the lowest it'll ever be. Come winter and, you know, spring and late fall, when it actually starts raining, it'll take up a good ten, fifteen, twenty feet of my property in the back because I got a pond that's my neighbor's house, and then his neighbor has a pond. When that overflows, all that water runs through my neighbor's yard and ends up into my yard, which my yard's the lowest point, and then that swell, swale builds quite a bit of water.
Is that swale from the back of the building?
I would have to measure, but it's probably about like twenty-five feet currently, twenty-five, thirty feet.
Before you get to the swale?
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to measure it, like I said, probably I'd say at least twenty feet. Basically, I normally, there's the water line that I like kept an eye on, I marked it. I didn't measure the exact depth of that.
Well, just pushing it back is existing, you're still gonna need the fifteen foot variance.
I can't push it back any further because of the swale, though.
But if the back of the building, you have another twenty-five feet, I'm saying, even if you.
Yeah.
Back, you would still need the variance.
Correct, the only way for me to avoid the variance would be to push it back sixty feet, and then, but you can't structurally build on that swale.
You have in your narrative here that you're, you're constructing a forty foot by sixty-five foot barn, including a thirteen foot overhang.
Correct.
On the left side of the, on the left. So if you eliminate the thirteen foot overhang, would that take care of your issue? Because I mean, the purpose of the building is to store vehicles, your personal stuff, your, the R V, the boat.
So part of that overhang, the backside, will actually be enclosed as well. So the thirteen foot overhang will basically be thirty feet of the building, that last section will be enclosed. And that's where I'm gonna store all my stuff to, like, my lawnmower and lawn equipment, basically, to maintain my property.
So it's not an, an open overhang that's across the.
Correct, it'll be an open overhang, about twenty-five feet.
Sixty-five feet.
Yeah, it'll be twenty-five feet roughly, um, overhang, which will have the same structure that you're showing, and the remainder of that overhang will be closed off, just so I have access, because by the time I put an R V.
But do you agree that if you would eliminate that overhang, you would still have the enclosed storage of forty by sixty-five?
I would still technically need a two foot variance.
Two feet is a lot less than fifteen feet.
Correct, but I still need to utilize that space, it's kind of the.
Can I interject here, the same, remind of, uh, you messed me up because I did all kinds of drafting and figuring out for this based on what the, this came in here. So I have to change, originally, it was a sixty-seven percent variance, which was out of, totally out of, uh, the question. Now it's a fifty percent, which is still a very large variance, which I'm not really crazy about. But if you, uh, moved the whole barn over fifteen feet more, and you eliminated about twenty feet, give or take, of the overhang by the pool area, that would take your overhang beyond the pool area, so it would still fit within the safety regulations. Can you see what I'm saying?
Twenty foot overhang, I'm asking for a thirteen foot overhang.
A thirteen.
Okay.
But I'm saying, no, twenty feet, I'm saying if you eliminated the front twenty feet, give or take, that would go around the pool, and you would still have your safety factor there. So you would have approximately, uh, still have about forty-five feet of overhang thirteen feet, and then you would be within a two foot variance, which would be very acceptable.
I, the only bad part with that, I wouldn't be able to push that back of the building back because it would end up in that natural swale.
No, no, you're not moving the building. Just leave the building where it is, except right now, you've got it fifteen feet, right? Move it another thirteen feet. That's gonna still take you within the, uh, safety, uh, barrier that you talked about by the pool. But if I, that front part of the barn, you eliminate about twenty feet, give or take, of the overhang, and then start the overhang just beyond where you have the pool footprint.
If I did do that, it would probably be closer to thirty-five, forty feet of the, um, building overhang that would have to eliminate.
Because that would be a lot more acceptable to me, because otherwise, you have a, still have a fifty percent, uh, variance. But just a suggestion, so, but, uh, we'll go with what you are, what you're gonna request.
Okay, yeah, it's.
Is it an option for you to reduce the site, the size of the building, of the accessory building?
I could probably reduce. So basically, the whole sizing of the barn is basically for the future R V, that's the depth, that's why it's so deep, and the same with that front bay, it's actually wider.
Issue.
So the wideness, correct?
Right.
If I do a boat and an R V in there, that's like the minimum space I need in there to actually not have it super tight where I'm, you know, rubbing.
But that's still, if you do that, you still have that space, and you don't, if you eliminate the overhang, which is thirteen feet, and you're asking for a fifteen foot variance, yes, you need a two foot variance, but again, two feet is more of an acceptable variance than fifteen feet.
Would it help if I were to go ten feet instead of thirteen feet for the, so basically removed, so I'd ask for a twelve foot variance? Is that out of question, in your guys' opinion?
Go ten feet for what?
For the overhang?
You're saying?
For the overhang section?
So knocking three feet off the.
It's not a substantial variance, and the, the.
Another thing.
Issue that I have, I think there's other places you can place this.
May I ask where you think?
Well, I mean, to be within the, the side yard, you know, so you wouldn't need a side yard variance, you wouldn't need a variance if you, I mean.
Where would it?
You're talking about, you say here, you have, uh, to position the barn in compliance with standard setbacks, would place it unreasonably close to the pool, potentially violating safety codes, hindering access for essential pool maintenance and impeding emergency response.
Correct.
Now, what safety codes are you referring to?
I was.
What essential pool maintenance would you not be able to do if you went closer to the pool?
Because I basically wouldn't be able to get anything between the pool. So I have the pool and then a retaining wall holding the pool structure, and there would, if I move that barn over, I wouldn't have access between the barn and the, um, the barn and the pool deck, so there would be no access, and also too, for emergency reasons, I figured that they would have access to get a truck around or some type of vessel to get to around the pool. Yeah, yeah, so that is like another big reason on why I requested that.
And again, too, the other option is to make it smaller, because I think you have another, I, I mean, you're, you're fine, you can build it the size that you requested, as far as, but I mean, you have another structure.
Yes.
On the property, too.
Yeah.
And that's for storage, too, isn't that?
Correct, but it's small, um, and it's.
Like, if you eliminate the, um, the overhang, which you said you need for the, your lawnmower and that kind of stuff, couldn't that go in the other structure that's existing now that you're going to be?
I do keep a lot of my lawn maintenance stuff in that structure, which is basically, um, all my, like, fertilizing equipment. Basically, I, I have a lot of property maintenance stuff, I have small machines as well that I keep in there. I have a little cabota tractor that I keep in there.
Is that, is that all that equipment is for that property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because I did purchase the property, and it was completely abandoned. I cleaned up a lot of the property, I spent a year and a half cleaning it. I obviously built a new house in twenty-two, and the machines that I have on the property basically helped me because I did everything myself to help me basically be, keep maintaining the property, and the whole place was basically a junkyard prior, there was steel everywhere, beds, tractors, there's a lot of debris everywhere, so I had to basically buy the material or the equipment to handle all the requirements for the property's needs.
I mean, it, it looks very nice, and your home looks very nice, but I just, and even to your, your last sentence here, it says, "I am also open to discussing any reasonable conditions or modifications the Board may suggest to approve this request." My personal suggestion is that you need to reduce, I mean, that's a substantial variance you're asking for.
Okay.
And if there's a way that you can reduce the size of the building, the size of the overhang, anything to make it, you may still need a variance, but not as substantial as you're asking.
Okay, what would you guys, what would you guys suggest is feasible when it comes to shortening that overhang and taking some of that side off, just so I can maintain the main structure of the building?
You're, you're, you're not, you do not want to remove that overhang by the pool because that would be the most simple and easiest, uh, as far as granting variances, so that knocks you down to like a two foot variance. If you knocked off that first twenty foot, give or take, whatever it takes to get around the pool area, and then just start your thirteen foot going all the rest of the way back, that would give you a two foot variance by moving it in that thirteen feet over.
I mean, even a five foot variance would be much more reasonable than a twenty foot or fifteen foot variance.
Just trying to think, if I did an eight foot overhang, that would give you five feet, is that something that you guys would consider?
A five foot variance?
A ten foot.
Or an eight foot variance?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments?
I have no comments.
Are you gonna, if you build this, are you gonna keep that old building that's?
I'm gonna, basically, I'm gonna, my plan is to keep it, the whole thing needs rehab. If it doesn't make sense to keep it financially, I'm gonna end up just tearing it down. But as of right now, my plan is to keep it, and then it's gonna, basically, it obviously looks dilapidated right now. During the process of the build of the barn, that whole building will be rehab, and that will match the barn with the stone and the windows, it'll be completely revamped.
And I'm kind of, I mean, I'm at the, you have a beautiful, you really do have a beautiful property, and the pool looks great, but it's almost like you placed the pool right smack dab in the middle, and you kind of created your own hardship here.
Yeah, I would say, well, my main hardship would be that, uh, swale in the back, because ideally, I could, I would like to, I would have liked to push everything back so I could comply, but unfortunately, that's not. Is there a certain variance that you guys would lean more towards than if I were to? Or is an eight foot variance too significant? Because my building isn't in the sight of my neighboring properties, really, I got tree line running that whole thing. And I have a little open section that is open, and I plan to plant trees there, so neighboring properties won't have any type of visuals on the building as well, so I don't see it affecting any type of, um, neighboring properties, same with drainage, it's all gonna end up in the same swale. Um, neighboring properties are high, too, I'm high, all the water, storm water goes into that same swale, so even the drainage that would be hitting the roof of the building would basically be landing on the same square footage or footprint of grass that would end up in that same swale anyway, due to grade.
Is the forty by sixty-five include the thirteen foot over, overhang, that's an addition?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, that's.
So it's a total footprint of.
That's an addition.
Yeah, so it's total footprint of fifty-three by sixty-five is what I initially came in here asking, but you guys seem that that's not plausible, really, so I'm trying to work with you guys, and hopefully we can get something that fits your guys' requirements a little better.
Well, at any, any way you look at it, you're asking for a variance, okay? Originally, it was twenty feet, then you found out it was fifteen feet. Um, if we can reduce that more, um, I think it, you know, it may be something that, and I can't speak for the rest of the Board, I'm only speaking for myself.
They'd have to reduce to fifty percent, that's for sure.
Okay, which is what I'm currently sitting at, correct?
So I mean, what are you able to do as far as if, if you're not, are you asking for an eight foot variance now? Or are you asking for a five foot variance, ten, what are we, what are we doing?
I'll ask.
What are you able to do with the building?
I'm just trying to work with you guys.
The thirteen foot overhang completely, you still have a forty by sixty-five foot accessory building, which is pretty big.
Yeah.
And you would only need a two foot variance, so somewhere between two feet and fifteen feet, we have, what can you do?
Trying to think, so. If I were, I could do an eight foot variance, if you guys would be okay, or more willing towards that, or sorry, so it'd be twenty-two, I don't, twenty-two foot variance, correct? Would that, twenty-two feet from the property line, eight foot variance?
For any.
Yes, that'd probably be, ideally, I can make that work.
What was that now?
I could make that work, eight foot, eight foot variance. So I'd be twenty-two feet off the property line, yeah.
And so if you did that, you would do, still do a forty by sixty-five with, with an overhang?
Yeah, I'd probably end up shrinking that overhang down, just so I can kind of, I gotta measure out some of my equipment just so I have that correct depth, and I'll make it work for what I need.
Okay. So you're asking for an eight foot variance?
I'll ask for an eight foot variance, yes.
Eight foot variance, okay. Um, anybody else on the Board have any comments? Is there anyone in the audience with any comments? Okay.
We have to.
If you can.
Come up.
Sit down. You may be able to come back up. If you could state your name.
William Vasco.
And your address?
Two four five six Ridge Road.
Swear to tell the truth, oh, truth, and nothing but the truth.
Absolutely. Um, my only concern with, with the building is, is he talked about the swale back there. I live next door, I've lived there for twenty-plus years.
When you say next door, south or?
South, yes, south.
Where he's asking for the variance.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, so I've been there for twenty-plus years, that swale runs across my property from his place into the lake at the neighbor's house. So my biggest concern is, where's all that water gonna go from that roof? It's gonna make it worse back there, so. That's, that's my biggest question, and I've heard of guys pumping the water out somewhere else, or, or doing something like that, but that area always gets wet back there constantly, so.
Well, if he didn't ask for a variance, I mean, he would still.
It's, you're still gonna have a problem, yeah. Right, right, but, but the closer it is, it's, the worse it's gonna make it. So.
Well, what, what is your opinion in him reducing the side yard variance? If, if he's asking for an eight foot as opposed to originally?
I think that's better, of course, but I'd like to see it a little bit less, but if he can work with that. Anything else? Nope, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe give them opportunity about the water, just for general answers question.
Come back up and maybe address that?
Yeah, I'll address it.
So in regards to the water, if that building is not there, the square footage, the footprint of that building, all that water that would hit this roof that will be part of the structure, that's all gonna drain into that. that's all gonna drain into that same exact swale anyways. So it's not gonna make that section of the property any more wet than it would if I didn't have the building, because that footprint is still gonna attract the same amount of rain, which will lead it to that same swale due to the grade of the property. So I don't see having a rough structure and having some type of drainage going to the same place, the water's already gonna drain without the building there, is gonna affect any type of additional wetlands or any type of additional problems or erosion for that area.
All right.
Yeah?
Suzanne? Donning Inspector, any comments? Did you want to come up, sir, or do you have a comment? Oh, sure. State your name.
Kevin Stanowick, two five nine one Bethany Lane.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth is she'll answer unto God.
Yes.
And you're speaking as a citizen?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure if I can ask.
Or a resident, actually.
A resident. Um, I'm not sure if I can ask the applicant these questions, but I just had a couple thoughts on this. I mean, agreed, I've actually seen the property grow and, um, become what it is today, and it's, it's absolutely gorgeous. Um, but just a couple things stick out, one, uh, I'm not sure what this gentleman does professionally, but a six, this, this is a huge structure, and a sixty-five-foot boat and a sixty-five-foot RV, RV seems huge for personal reasons, so I know there's a lot of equipment there, but I'm just curious if there's going to be use professionally for storage on some of this equipment. Um, and additionally, whoever, if, if this gentleman did do all of this landscaping himself, which again is very impressive, the pool was built, the, the, um, the blocking, you know, the, the foundation, the walkways were all built. Um, and, and it seems to me like there should have been some thought going forward about the building at that time too, so, um, I just wanted to share that with the board and those are just my opinions.
Thank you, I think we did ask if it was pers, yeah, sure, you can come back up, I think we asked if it was for, for personal use.
Yeah, I mean, the, the building is bigger than the house, and that's what I, what is getting me.
It's, it's a large barn.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm saying if you.
If I were to, if I were to shrink it by six feet in, would that help? So I could do a forty by, forty by sixty with the eight-foot variance? So instead of it being so deep, I could shred or shed six feet off, and I still should have enough room to fit in RV, um, and in regards.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, the depth is not a.
Or sorry, sixty-five.
The depth is not a problem.
Correct.
It's just your sideline, I mean, and we just, I mean, I got barns too, but that's a big barn.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying that, um, yeah, you can put it down hundred feet if you want, if.
Yeah.
If it met the criteria, but the sideline's all we're worried about.
Correct.
Yeah, the square footage is not a question as far as what can be built on that property.
Based on his acreage and calculation, he can handle up to forty-nine hundred square foot.
Right. So actually, if you had a forty-by-sixty-five building and chopped off the thirteen-foot, uh, overhang, you would ask for a two-foot variance, which the rest of the board would have to vote on it, but it's, would be a very small ask as opposed to.
You think an eight-foot would be too excessive? Is there a number, let me rephrase this, I know obviously all of you guys have your own opinions, your own minds, is there a number that would be, obviously you said two-foot, that that can work with a little bit better than the initial fifteen? I feel like I'm, I'm trying to work with you guys, I'm trying to, you know what I mean?
The, the eight feet is a lot, a lot more.
Okay.
But feasible.
Also, we're not here to negotiate.
I, I understand.
What works, I mean, if there's an alternative, and again, as it was stated, it's almost like a hardship that you created for yourself, if you want this big of a building or accessory building, uh, it, it's very difficult to.
I get what you're saying, but I would also rebuttal stating that the swale is the hardship and not so much the pool, because if I were to follow the criteria that's given, um, and then let me re, kick back a little bit to answer this gentleman's questions, um. When I initially built the pool, I was under the impression that it was a fifteen-foot variance, um, because I did just glance through Hinckley and I noticed that it was a fifteen-foot variance, but I didn't notice that if you have two acres.
That's in a different district.
Yeah, so I was looking up the wrong district, so when I put the pool in, I was looking at the wrong details with that. So that's why I built my pool where I did, so I can still have the barn that I thought I was not having to fight for, but it is what it is, um, so I was under the wrong impression when it came to the variance setback requirements, I thought it was fifteen feet and not thirty, and then when I spoke with her regarding the variance or the zoning to get the permit for the building, she mentioned it was thirty feet, and then that kind of threw me for a loop on that part. Um, so that's why I originally initially was trying to get that fifteen-foot, but I feel as though if eight-foot is something that is more of appealing to you, you guys, that would help it get passed, I would, I'll, I can make eight-foot work. And then as for professionally or personally, it will all be personal. Um, all my machines that I use to maintain the property and clean the property and just the progress of the property, that all stays on site and I don't have any plans to get rid of, and and honestly, right now, it's just sitting out in the open, it's kind of an eyesore, not only to my neighboring properties, but also to just the general public of Hinckley, of people seeing equipment sitting in the yard. And I would like to, you know, keep it covered.
So a five-foot variance is about sixteen percent? As opposed to an eight-foot, twenty-six percent? And are you, would you be able to make this building work with a five-foot variance, what would you do?
I would say probably eight-foot is the.
The minimum?
Minimum that I can do to make the building work, just due to the way I have it laid out and where I want my equipment and stuff, excuse me, in the building.
Can I just ask the, the old building that's there, is that existing non-conforming?
Yes.
Okay. That's like right on the property line too.
Mm-hmm, okay. And I think when we were out there on Saturday.
Yeah.
That was staying, and I guess it's staying.
Because I have like, I have log splitters, I have small equipment.
I don't think one foot's gonna make a difference.
No.
Whether it's seven foot or eight foot.
Okay.
So.
Anybody else?
After, I'll, I'll, okay, anybody else right now?
No, I personally, I like it more in the back of the yard, but, uh, I mean, I will consider the eight feet.
So can we go with the fact that you're gonna ask for an eight-foot, uh, variance?
Yeah, that's more feasible.
Setback of twenty-two feet?
Yes.
That's what you're gonna, that's what you're gonna ask for then?
Yeah, that's what I'll ask for.
Can I ask you, if you don't get this variance, are you still gonna go ahead with putting an accessory building up?
I have no idea, I'd have to do some measuring and figure it out. If I don't get this variance, it'd obviously be disappointing, but, um, ultimately, I'm only trying to improve not only my property, but the neighboring properties, I don't see it depreciating anyone's property, or I feel like I'm trying to add value to this township and I enjoy being here, and I feel like asking for an eight-foot variance is a fair ask coming from fifteen, and I feel as though I kind of doing nothing but trying to improve the township and my property.
Well, I think everybody stated that you have a nice property.
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else, anything? In the audience, anyone? No, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, if there is no other comments, we'll, uh, do the Duncan factors. Who's ready? Okay, uh, will the property yield a reasonable return, or can there be a beneficial use of the property without the variance?
Rubel?
Uh, yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Yes.
Listner?
Yes.
Global?
Yes, is the variance substantial? But before we even answer that, we're, you're asking for an eight-foot variance, right? So you've reduced it from fifteen to eighteen, okay. Is the variance substantial?
Shaffer?
No.
Rollins?
No.
So listen.
No.
Flabber?
No.
Rubel?
I'm gonna say yes, it's still like twenty-five percent about, if I'm calculating that correctly.
Will the essential character of the neighborhood be substantially altered, or will adjoining properties suffer substantial detriment if the variance is granted?
Rollins?
No.
So listen?
No.
Global?
No.
Rubel?
Um, yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Will the variance adversely affect the delivery of governmental services?
Listner?
No.
Global?
No.
Rubel?
No.
Shaffer?
No.
Rollins?
No.
Do the property owner purchase the property with knowledge of the zoning restrictions?
Global?
Um, yeah, I don't know.
Rubel?
I'm gonna say yes, just not the right ones, apparently.
Shaffer?
I would say he was aware of the zoning, but misinterpreted it.
Rollins?
Aware that there was zoning, but misinterpreted as well.
So listen?
Uh, during the purchase of the property, I'd say no.
Can the problem be solved by some manner other than granting of a variance?
Rubel?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Rollins?
Yes.
So listen?
Yes.
Global?
Yes. Does the variance preserve the spirit and intent of the zoning requirement, and will substantial justice be done by granting the variance?
Shaffer?
Yes.
Rollins?
Yes.
So listen?
Yes.
Global?
No.
Rubel?
No.
All right, uh, any person adversely affected by the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals may appeal to the Court of Common Pleas of Medina County and the Grants that such decision was unreasonable or unlawful. And at this point, do I have a formal resolution?
Uh, I make a motion to grant a variance to Thomas Perchella, property owner of two four four zero Ridge Road, Hinckley, Ohio, permanent parcel number zero one six zero three C three zero 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 seven, who is requesting to construct a forty-by-sixty-five-foot accessory building with a thirteen-foot overhang in a location that does not meet the minimum side yard setback requirement of thirty feet at said property. The proposed side yard setback is twenty-two feet, the variance requested is eight feet.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Bill? All right, uh, again, a simple, a yes, simple majority with the fore and present is in favor of the applicant. A no simple majority or a tied vote denies the applicant's request. And at this point, we'll take a vote.
Flapton?
No.
So listen?
Yes.
Rollins?
Yes.
Shaffer?
No.
Rubel?
No.
I'm sorry, your variance has been denied, and, uh, you have a year, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, you have a, uh, you can, what is it, a little, little paragraph. You have thirty days to, uh, to appeal the decision at Medina County.
Then you paperwork it goes right up?
Yeah, you got it correct. Yes, you have to sign.
There you go. Is that a good reference?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, do I have a motion to adjourn this public hearing?
She'll move, second.
All right, that's Bill, uh, we are adjourned at eight oh three PM.